Five thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. And I would ask Stacy if it leads us in invocation and pledge, please, sir.
Well, it's gracious heavenly father, we just come to you, Lord, and we just ask you to preside over this meeting tonight, Lord, just be with us as business is conducted. Let it be for the benediction of this community and to your glory, Lord. Lord, for these commissioners, we just ask you to put special blessing upon them. We thank you for them. We thank you for each department that works this city. Lord, it's a team and without everybody, we can't do it, and we just thank you. We're very blessed to have the team that we have. Lord, tonight, we want to lift up Gary and Vicky. That whole Mercer family, Lord, we just asked that you put your hand upon them. Just hold them tight, Lord. Lead, guide, and direct them and help them forward. Lord, as we go to continuation of this meeting, we just ask that you send us some rain, Lord, you know that we're needing it, the lakes are low, tanks are low. Lord, we just ask and know that in your time, you'll do that. Be with us now, and we ask all these things, in your full and precious name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the government, which is chance, one nation, an underdog, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and fairness for all.
Stacy, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Open forum? We had none, okay? All right, we'll go down to staff report, and I'll turn it over to the city manager at this time.
Good evening, mayor and commissioner, thank you. I wanted to, we do have all the department reports in your back of information. We're not gonna stop on each one of them, I did wanna highlight on slide twelve, the partnership program that we have with the EDC and the county for demoing substandard homes that you, that have gone through that whole process, so there have been several that have been done, and again, this is a partnership between the city, the county, and EDC with counties crews doing the demo and with EDC providing two thousand twenty-five hundred per home, I believe. Yeah, so that certainly helps the county, so we're very appreciative of our partners. On slide nineteen, we had several things going on, but we did wanna talk about the Fill the Bus event that we had, it was very successful. And then we also had last month, we had our employee picnic. Fun time was had by all. We had some prizes to give out, and businesses were generous in donating those, and so we were very appreciative of that. It was a great time, twin party, picnic, and just wanted to highlight that. We do, the National Night Out is scheduled for October third, which is actually our norm regularly scheduled commission meeting, so we wanted to talk to you and see if, if and when you guys would like to reschedule that, we did that last year. We could do it that same week on, on a Monday, or we could do it that next week on a Tuesday, which would be October tenth. So we kinda wanted to get some feedback from you all on when you wanted to reschedule that. So let us know if you would email Jessica so we can get that scheduled. But it will, I'm assuming you all want it rescheduled for, so we can all attend National Night Out on the third. And then the auction update, so it has, it was finalized, they're finalizing it now, it closed on September first. We had a really good turnout, proceeds were sixty-one, six oh three, and that money will go into our vehicle replacement fund. We do have another round of auction items that we will be getting together as well. So Jessica really kinda headed up that effort and worked closely with Todd, our public works director, and they did a great job on that. The street improvement update, I just wanted to give you an update on that, I've kind of been letting you know, but they, you know, we've been getting great compliments on the work that Radon has done thus far. They've done the long stretches, obviously, of Rose and Elliot and Seven. Unfortunately, they did come into a snag where they weren't getting material by and large because of TechStop projects, so it's kind of a blessing and not a blessing on the one hand, because some of these projects, one of these projects that is getting a lot of material right now is one eighty-three. So that's, that's good. But anyway, so I did talk with them today, and they will be they are right now forecasting that they should start getting material again next week. And so that will be finishing up the intersections along roads, Elliot and Seven, and then the standalone, the rest of the standalone intersections that we have used throughout the city. So that is going on one eighty-three. Last I talked with Jordan at Tech Dot, you know, he was thinking, and this has been about six weeks ago, that they would have done that traffic switch by now. That hasn't yet happened, but they are making progress, and they, like I said, they've got the material. And if you've been out there, you can see where it's getting close, so he's estimating another three weeks in that traffic switch should happen. Also, the bridging projects that we have under construction with on Live Oak and Shelton probably about another month on those projects, so those are progressing. And the upcoming events on Oh, yeah, Jessica, I wanted you to give an update on that.
So on T A B C application, since we passed the liquor in May, we have had four that we've done so far, three have been package store permits that have been signed, one is currently active, that's the one across from Walmart. Two are still pending, one of those is a distributor as well, and then we've had one mixed beverage, and that was for Black Horse, and they are active as of September first. So there is talk of multiple other places, but those have not been signed yet.
And then on the upcoming events, you see there's September ninth, the nine eleven first responders benefit, and this chamber event, Sips of Summer, and we do have Soul Pickup on the twenty-first. Malcolm, do you have more information on the nine, on the nine one one first responders benefit?
It's at Hicken Muggles. And the volunteers, mainly for the volunteers who raise funds, they have cookouts and stuff like that, it's you come out and buy burgers, stuff like that, it's built up their funds.
Yeah, okay. And then, Udi, I don't know if you've got an update. Is it sold out yet? Which, uh, the Sips of Summer?
Yeah.
Uh, no, not sold out, so please come to the chamber and get your ticket, twenty-five dollars or thirty-five at the door, and there is one more event, golf, uh, the golf tournament. Which, and I'm sorry, but yeah, that's next week, the following week. So this Saturday, Sips of Summer, and then the sixteenth golf tournament.
Are you still thinking teams?
Yes, yes, we are, call the chamber, sign up.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, and I think that is it, God.
Special presentation and announcements, do we have any?
Um, that's actually gonna be, no.
Well?
I feel special. I'm gonna beg for the money. Looking at my budget, I think that's you'll notice the bottom number went up again, imagine that. All that to do, I'm gonna be talking about two items on that to make it quick. Really, the only increase, if you go to the pictometry there, you see two charges for pictometry on there that are the same amounts. So what we did is the CAD out of surplus funds funded the first year of the pictometry money, and we've had a kind of a verbal agreement with the entities to be reimbursed for that in year two, and then in the coming years, it'll just be the, whatever year, it'll be an annual expense. So you have year one and year two in this year's budget, next year it'll just be one of those line items, not both. So you'll see that reduction in the budget. The reason for that is we had to sign a contract, get it done, and try to get some things on the books quickly. Now looking at, and mostly in the county, but it also benefited y'all. In the county, we found, we, and we didn't even get to dig into the pictometry this year. We are actually doing that now. In the county, we found forty-five property, no, thirty-eight properties, sorry, for a value of about forty-five million dollars. In the city limits, we stumbled on seventeen properties for an additional two and a half million. Doing the math, that doesn't quite pay for, for your expense annually, but going forward, like I said, we hadn't even dug into it, they gave us a report, they have a thing called four hundred. We have a hundred and eighty-six swimming pools on our tax roll, they found seven hundred and ninety. So we've got some work to do on swimming pools. Things like that, doesn't have a lot of value, but they need to be on record and you know, accounted for. So that's what we're doing now in the office, this is kind of a downtime for us, since we don't do collection. So we're going through the pictometry abstract by abstract, subdivision by subdivision, looking at those things and adding them. And I'll have a new number for y'all in about too much, probably come back and say, this is what we had after running this, so this is where you're seeing your value, and it's how pictometry is working for us. If you don't know what that is, that's a flyover, so the company comes in and flies over, it's not drones, airplanes, I've been accused, somebody said they saw me in a helicopter, I'm not in a helicopter. Flying around looking, but we do have pictures, and it's pretty amazing, they call it three-inch pictometry on our side, the public view is six-inch. But we can get down, I can measure the side of wall in your house on the three-inch, to tell if it's a eight-foot, nine-foot, twelve-foot wall, you're within three inches of that, so it's pretty amazing technology, and it's really helped us pick up mostly stuff behind lock gates in the county, so that's where we're seeing the major, major additions. But any questions on the budget besides that, those two items, that makes up all but, I think, seven thousand of the budget increase. And that other amount is in employment insurance, health insurance going up. Retirement went up. Any other questions on? So data, that's the, that's the page I passed out, I wanna go over it for just a minute. I keep digging into this data and thinking, y'all, we could do some really cool stuff, Cynthia and I talked some in the other entities about trend lines and things we can look at, so this, this is a lot on one page, but this is the average home inside the city limits of Breckenridge. A hundred thousand dollar home roughly this year, that's what we call FR two, so it's a wooden framed house. Built in around the year nineteen seventy, and then about fourteen, about thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred square foot. And seventy percent good, that means seventy percent of its life is still there, that's the average home we're looking at, so if you look on the on that top graph, or the top chart, in two thousand thirteen, the tax rate on that home, the overall tax rate, everybody together, was two dollars ninety-four cents, plus change. And the city was eighty-nine cents of that, you jump over to twenty twenty-three, and the overall tax rate's two dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the city's a dollar five, that's, I want everybody to hear that, everybody hear that? In two thousand thirteen, four hundred, you were two dollars ninety-four cents plus. This year, you're gonna be looking at more like two sixty-seven, that's an estimate, but two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight. Taxes do go down. Despite everybody's theory. So in the next chart there is the value of an average home. You can see in that same amount of time, value went from fifty thousand five hundred and thirty dollars on that home to a hundred thousand, so in ten years, it doubled in value. Uh, that's based on sales. So we look at what that house is selling for, similar homes like that sell for, and we do adjustments and come up with these numbers, so it's a lot of math, it's a lot of fun. Colonel Draper would be proud of it. So if you have a homestead on that, you can see that your taxes in two thousand thirteen were about six hundred and seventy-six dollars, and in twenty twenty-three, about eleven hundred, a five hundred dollar increase, but I want you to go backwards from, from right to left and go back across and look. Since two thousand sixteen, there's been relatively little change in the amount of tax people bring on their home, if they're homesteaded. So it's, it's not much, there's not much variance there. What happened in that time, well, if you look at the chart above, you see that values were flat during that time, things weren't moving, things weren't selling, we weren't seeing increases in value, and then in twenty nineteen, you begin to see pretty drastic, well, there's a dip, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, values went down. But then twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, you see pretty large increases in value, and that's just aggressive sales market that was in that. You know what happened with the, if you're homesteaded, you've been protected, like I say, your taxes have remained pretty flat, and then forty, fifty dollars of each other, year in, year out. But if you're not homesteaded, that's the next chart down. You can see, you saw about a thousand dollar increase over that, over a ten-year period. It's considerable increase, I got more copies of this. So, you know, the homestead does its job, it protects the people, the residential customer that's living here. But along with that, homesteads inside the city limits. In twenty seventeen, we had nine hundred and five homesteads inside the city limits. In twenty twenty-three, we had five hundred and seventy-four. I don't know what to tell you that means, I'll let you tell for you that, but that's a decrease in homestead, people homesteading inside the city limits. That same period, number of parcels. In twenty twenty-three, that's just the number of real properties, what I'm saying there. Twenty twenty-three, we had, I mean, twenty seventeen, we had twenty-one hundred and ninety-seven parcels inside the city limits. This year, we had twenty-one hundred and thirty-nine. Not much change over that period. But in the county, in twenty seventeen, we had forty-five hundred and thirty parcels. And in twenty twenty-three, we had forty-eight hundred and fifty-seven. So the growth we're experiencing, I would say that points to most accounting, not inside our city limits. Something to be considered, looked at. I wanna break that down some more, to do some more looking at that, but then the bottom charts, so the average home, that's just graphing those numbers I gave you up above. And then your tax rate in green, and you can see, really, it stayed flat over the ten years, it's pretty flat, pretty, hadn't had a lot of move, eighty-nine cents to a dollar five. It was not, and most of that occurred by the year two thousand sixteen, well, all of it, really, for the city. So since two thousand sixteen, your tax rate's been pretty flat. With just a little bit of variance. This year, what's helped, last year, what helped us is the county paid off debt, that made the, the overall rate for people go down considerably. This year, you're getting the school, the tax bill. As long as all y'all vote yes, I know some of y'all are gonna vote no on the tax break, but you know, that was a joke. Opposition that's gonna be in the election is, everybody vote yes, I didn't say that. The, you know, as long as everybody votes for the tax cut and that bill passes, you're gonna see the compression kick in on the school, and I don't know if you read, they're dropping from ninety ninety-four cents to seventy-four cents, that's a twenty cent drop in overall tax on local, so that's about what we saw, we saw twenty-two last year, I think, out of the county, so pretty good drops. People are upset, you think, these numbers, I did not show you lake numbers. If you think that homestead, without homestead, gets expensive, and the city without a homestead, lived at the lake the last three years. That was, some of those houses saw three hundred percent increase in three years' time. It's considerable jumps, and if you're not homesteading behind the protection. Things that are changing in the, in the tax law also is what they call the circuit breaker, I don't know if you're aware of that. Circuit breaker now says, like on your homestead, I can only go up ten percent on assessed value each year on your homestead. The circuit breaker kicks in for two years, and it only allows to go up twenty percent on any other value of real property, so that also includes minerals. So if oil and gas prices took a big jump, we won't realize but twenty percent of that for the next two years. We're used to the last hundred percent of those. Commercial businesses, same thing. Anything with a value less than five million dollars, so that's most properties in Stevens County. Anyway, any questions, any questions go to the budget? You know, the numbers or any of these numbers or anything, any data you'd like to see that you kinda are of interest in. I'll just tell Cynthia. I'll dig it up if I can.
Thank you. We'll retire in every Very much. All right, that'll be no action taken in that. We'll go to consent agenda, any commission member may request an item on the consent agenda, taking it for individual consideration. So we'll go to item four, consider approval of August first, two thousand twenty, great road commission meeting minutes as recently recorded.
Consent agenda. I move to approve consent agenda items four through eight as presented.
Put in a second all in favor. Or I mean, item five, consider approval of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
That's all.
Where to go, where to go? All right, well, let's, I was wondering about that, well, y'all looked at the rest of those, and then we'll do it all at once, I'm sorry.
We already have.
They just approved all of the items, all the consent agenda items, so you can move on to the public hearing.
Okay.
There, we're, we're finished with the consent agenda, you go ahead and move on to the public.
Listen, I've had a surgery on my, on my ears and up through my nose, so I'm not hearing like I should, so I what they put in my ears and nose, you would not want to have at all. So we need to do what now, I'm sorry, you
Number nine.
All right.
Yeah, just that one.
Gotcha. All right, public hearing, folks, this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, city of Breckenridge budget.
Open the public hearing.
Yeah, I fifty-one.
I do not have any speakers, so I do not have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing.
We'll close it at five fifty-two then.
Yeah.
Item ten, discussion and any necessary action on approving Stevens County appraisal district fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget.
So he just presented it, so if you
Sorry, just need to, need a motion?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, but I guess, I move to approve the Stevens County appraisal district fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget as presented.
Second motion, second all in favor. Motion approved. Item eleven, discussion and any necessary action on approving the binding report of Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation. And I'll turn it back over to the city manager for this area.
Okay. The next several items are the B E D C items, but on this one, David Miller is here, he's the executive director with the Breckenridge Economic Development Council, and he's going to Corporation's meeting, and he's going to just make a brief presentation. You do have all the background information, it's a three-page update on his annual report, but David, can you pull up and highlight some of those?
Good afternoon. So I'm gonna just hit a couple of these things in here, one of which is under B, economic development. I just make a statement here that I think is pretty well reverberating to me that housing is directly influencing our workforce availability, and so to grow, you need houses to grow, so that's one of our biggest obstacles right now, getting more housing. One of which, you read later in this, we're in talks with a developer right now, for a pretty big housing development. We should have some more solid answers and detail on that in the next week, actually. We got a contract today, but very sizable housing development is just right there on the cusp of being that the real thing. T C C, we should be closing on conveying to them, the building that they're in. They're continuing to be a really great partner in our workforce. We have twenty-four dual credit students with them doing welding right now. One of the things that is become a little bit of a snag is they're trying to operate C D L licensing course, but we can't find a strip of road wide enough, long enough, quiet enough for them to do it here, so just as the public, as y'all have options to, to that may qualify for them, I think they're looking for like a two hundred or so long foot road that's forty feet wide, something like that. If you know of anything, it's just a parking lot that somebody's willing to offer. That's a really great program, because it's not just for, you know, the twenty to twenty-five year olds that are trying to get their next step. This is something that any of our, I mean, even our local C D L drivers should be using to recertify and even get into the field of commercial driving. C B B, we hired Rhonda Crawford to run that, and she has done a perfect job of starting to compile data from our local hotels, events, we've got a couple of events that we're looking at holding next year, and so she's done a perfect job with that. Bell, we actually talked to the group right now to take that building and the neighboring lots. Again, we should be giving some more numbers for them this next week, and right now, it's a pretty interesting development as far as what they would do with that building and neighboring lots. One of the things that we brought to y'all before was the possibility of purchasing seven, seven oh five industrial loop for a local business, they were able to stay within their own building, but that building did just close today for a completely different buyer, I don't have the details on them yet, but there's a a new business coming to town in that building. The solid grants, they're we're running to deal them, they're coming in fact, so then they can be done. We expanded it outside the city limits, we've already got, I mean, outside the downtown, but still within city limits, we've got two that are already done, and a third one is approved and waiting to be done. One of the things y'all will see pretty soon is that the B E D C voted to, we did a project about twelve years ago where we restored the murals in town, and we voted to do that again this last week. A muralist, Lauren failed, she's doing a bunch of new restorations and even some new murals over in Graham, she's the one who we awarded that, that project to. The, the total cost for that would be up to thirty-four thousand five hundred. That is if she did four restorations on everything. To do just restoration, broken at seventeen thousand, it's gonna be a mix in there. And that is it, any questions?
So we just need motion to approve.
I move to approve the binding report that the Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation has presented.
Second. Motion, second all in favor. Thank you. Item twelve, discussion and any necessary action on approving the fiscal year twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation budget.
So again, he's here, but if you have questions, he's happy to answer, but you've got the information there in your packet for these next several items. So if you have questions, we can answer them, otherwise.
I move we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation budget as presented.
Second. Motion, second all in favor. None opposed. Item thirteen, discussing any necessary action approved, B E D C contract renewal with the Breckenridge Chamber of Commerce.
So again, that contract's in your packet, this is basically the board has is asking for approval, and they've already approved it for their partnership with the chamber for administrative assistance, and also the C B, they've added the C B B part-time, as he mentioned, Rhonda Crawford is a part-time person, so that this contract is updated to include that change.
I move to approve B E D C contract renewal with Breckenridge Chamber of Commerce as presented.
Second. Motion, second all in favor. Item fourteen, discuss and any necessary action on approving B E D C board and directors as recommended by B E D C.
So they're recommending the re-import appointment of Mike Griffith, who serves on there currently, and then the appointment of Mr. Sid Curry to replace Kevin Simmons, who has the appointment of Mr. Sid Curry, um, to replace, uh, Kevin Simmons, who has, um, basically met his, um, three-year term on it. So we'll be cycling it off.
I move we approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three, appointing members to the B E D C board of directors as presented.
All the motion, second all in favor. Item fifteen, discussion and necessary action on proving ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending September thirty, two thousand twenty-four, in accordance with the laws of the state of Texas, appropriating the various amounts thereof and repealing all ordinance in conflict therein and providing for an effective date.
So you guys have seen, um, these numbers and these figures first all summer long. Um, and so, uh, there is an increase, the proposed tax rate is one point zero five four seven one for, uh, one hundred valuation, we did use the de minimis, uh, rate calculation on that, that de minimis tax rate is one point one six, so we are underneath that. Uh, the new revenue tax rate is point nine one seven five zero, and the voter approval tax rate was point nine seven one eight. Um, what's in that budget, um, again, um, we are moving the debt from the general fund to the water wastewater fund. Um, where those are water wastewater projects, so that's more appropriate, we did free up that debt capacity on the general fund side. And that's what, um, the C O's that you guys issued earlier, a couple meetings ago, and we received those funds last week, what is today, we did receive them on the twenty ninth. Um, and they are in the logic account that, uh, you guys authorized, which provides for a greater return on, um, the, uh, the interest rate, the investment, while those funds are there for two to three years. Again, all of those goals are associated with our strategic planning. So what I'm trying to show is how, how the expend expenditures that we're, uh, recommending are in line with the strategic plan. We put a lot of time and effort into that, a lot of meetings with you all, with staff, with the public, um, and community leaders. Um, trying to get our, we still struggle with, um, retaining employees. And so bringing those employees up by four percent and those police and fire, um, an equity adjustment of the dollar fifty, um, is going to help us be a little bit more competitive in the marketplace. Um, the vehicle replacement program, um, moves about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we're dedicating to that. Um, then in the long run is going to save us money and we've already, um, projected some of those cost savings in this budget. Um, with maintenance and, and, uh, fuel, um, so you'll see that. We do have included two back holes for public works, uh, a lease purchase program. Um, the department, the fire department, of course, the jobs of life, which that was a partnership project with the county, so we pay for half and they pay for half. Um, and then again, significant funding for the Solas Creek Maintenance and the annuals. And, um, we do have some operational efficiencies, um, included and we'll be talking about one um, later on tonight, uh, for the water treatment plant, but um, that ARPA, the A M I project, uh, we were able to reduce the meter reading, um, position F T E from two to one, um, and, and I will say that was a natural, I mean, we had already, um, transferred that to another, that employee to another department. And then the garage as well transferred, um, that um, F T E to another department, and then we'll talk more about the water treatment plant. And then the next ones are summary sheets that you've seen, this is the general, um, fund and really, oh, and I'll just highlight on this slide is what's included, so again, for the, um, cost of living adjustments, the merit adjustments and the, um, equity adjustments. Um, we're looking at about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and then the fleet maintenance, two twenty-six. Um, and you see those other costs, so those are the main new expenditures. Were there, I know, you know, you guys have asked your questions and are maybe questioned out, but if there's any questions, let us know, otherwise, tonight is the actual, um, adoption of the budget and remember Senate bill and you, you have the wording, there's very specific wording that y'all need to read. Um, but in the interest, and I'll try not to let my, my personal perspective, in the interest of transparency, um, that's what Senate bill two was, to reduce property taxes and increase transparency, unfortunately, um, I don't know that that was actually achieved, but um, that is, that was the goal, um, so they're trying and um, that's why we have various specific ways in which we adopt them, ways in which we were just to try to make sure that we're being as transparent as we can, um, about, uh, the tax rate and how those rates are calculated, unfortunately, it's just a very complex calculations. Um, Will knows very well, um, so that's what we've got and this item is, unless there's any questions, this is the actual adoption of the budget. The ordinance of this is strongly thirty fifteen.
And motion and all that, or any questions? Like we've gone off it quite a bit the last couple of months.
I move to approve ordinance, uh, number twenty-three dash fifteen and to set and approve you, the municipal budget for the twenty twenty-three. It's good, it should be twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four. Prove the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Motion, second all in favor. A motion has been made and second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash fifteen, entry set and approval. The municipal budget for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, I ask the city secretary to please call the robe. City secretary?
Mayor Commissioners, when I call your name, just say yea or nay. Mayor Sims? Commissioner Hamilton? Commissioner Durham? And Commissioner Moore is not present and Mayor Proton Mercer is not present.
All right, the motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen is set to approval of municipal budget for twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four fiscal year passes on a three to zero vote. Sixteen, discuss and so approval of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one, ratifying the tax revenue for the neck, for the tax year two thousand twenty-three, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for the city of Bre- Breckenridge. This vote is in addition to, it's separate from the vote to adopt the budget. This vote is to acknowledge that the property tax increases, the tax revenue to support the budget for this fiscal year, to ratify the property tax levy increase reflected in the budget. A vote is required by state law and council must make this vote separately to make clear that we know it will take more property taxes than the city raised last year to pay for the budget that we have approved for this year. This is not a vote for the tax rate.
Uh, I move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the adopted annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Second.
All right, motion the second. A motion has been made, the second to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the adopted annual budget for fiscal two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, I ask the city secretary to please call the robe.
Well, that's a typo, so can we, uh, restate that, uh, reflecting in the annual budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four? Mayor Sims?
Yes, you could call him.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Hamilton? Commissioner Durham? Commissioner Moore is not present and Mayor Proton Mercer is not present.
The motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the adopted annual budget for fiscal two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four passes on a three to zero vote. Item seventeen, discuss, consider ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen, leveling ad valorem taxes for the use and sport of the municipal government of the city of Breckenridge, Texas. And providing for the interest to sink in form for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, directing the collection thereof and providing for the time of paying the ad valorem taxes levy and providing that taxes become delinquent if not paid.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of a dollar, uh, one point zero five four seven one, which is effectively a three point four zero percent increase in the tax rate. This would be a debt service of zero point two five five one zero cents and that maintenance and operation rate of zero point seven nine nine six one. Second.
All right, motion is second, has been made and second to approve ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one point zero five four seven one, which is effectively a three point four zero percent increase in the tax rate. This would be a debt service of zero point two five five one zero and a maintenance and operations rate of zero point seven nine nine six one, I ask the city secretary to please, it's called the robe.
Mayor Sims? Commissioner Hamilton? Commissioner Durham? Commissioner Moore is not present and Mayor Proton Mercer is not present.
The motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen, and that property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of a dollar point zero five four seven one, which is effectively a three point four percent increase in the tax rate. This would be a debt service of zero point two five five one zero and a maintenance and operation rate of zero point seven nine nine six one passes with a three to zero vote. Item eighteen, discussing any necessary action approving water treatment plant project.
So, um, excuse me, this is the project where we are, um, the water treatment plant is basically a twenty-four seven operation, so we have five full-time employees out there. We're proposing to reduce, um, the full-time employees by one and implement this complement to our current SCADA system at the water treatment plant, which will provide, um, the capacity to be able to remote notify, notify, and so our on-call, um, folks would be able to be ready to handle that, um, this, um, you have the quote there, so um, we're seeking approval and authorizing the city manager to, um, execute that agreement, um, with the provider. And you see that it is forty-eight, three, two, five, forty-eight thousand. So this will be right now, that full-time employee is budgeted at approximately fifty-two thousand ongoing. So this first year will pay the forty-eight, three, two, five for this new system. And then in the out years, it will be, um, a realized savings ongoing.
I move to approve water treatment plant project as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Well, ho- hold on, I'm.
And authorizing the city manager to execute it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, motion second, all in favor. Not a close, thank you. Discussion, and I'm not seeing any necessary action regarding approval of purchase and installation of new playground equipment and canopy for the Breckenridge city park.
So I'm excited to bring this forward, this will be the first official project, um, of the C O dollars that we received that were planned, um, remember the lion's share of that funding, um, will be for streets, for the street department and street improvements, um, but approximately, you know, these were all approximate and we'll get to that list, uh, or, uh, later on, which I've shown before, but I'm showing again tonight. Um, you know, six hundred thousand, give or take for parks and then six hundred thousand, give or take for public work facilities. So what this is, is the new playground equipment, and here you have a conceptual rendering, um, of what is being proposed. So you'll see, the only change to this, um, you'll see the treetops there, uh, posts to the treetops will also be that dark brown, um, instead of that lighter brown. Um, hopefully you can see that well, is that another one? Maybe, yeah, right there, maybe you see it a little bit better, so you'll. And so we also will have a canopy, which will be really nice, um, to cover that equipment and keep it cooler in the Texas sun, um, and then the surface there is gonna be, um, that blue color which will make it seem like it's water.
Where's, where's that going?
Uh, it's going to replace the existing park equipment, it's like thirty-two years old. So, um, what this contract does, uh, if you all approve it tonight, will, they will, um, take that out from the spines of it and, um, install the new equipment.
So we can't like get a historical marker? By the swing that's been there for like thirty.
If that's what it takes to get.
So, I mean, and those are, I mean, that, that's pretty close, um, to what, you know, it's conceptual rendering, um, that they have, this company has done, we, they were, uh, working through, through the buy board, um, that they have done projects in um, other cities, including Saginaw, um, so you can go online and see some of those. Um, I wanted to get to that, um, the chart that shows you all of the, um, this chart here, oh, okay, well, you have it up in your packet, but, um, it's in the packet, uh, the list of the of improvements overall, just so you, I mean, we talked about it, but, um, again, these are estimated costs. Um, and so it's the playground equipment and canopy, um, a volleyball sand court, um, in the park master plan, um, it talks about diversifying the offerings of the park. And so this and the dog park fencing would be ways to diversify the use of the existing parks and some existing property that we have, um, as far as dog park, uh, improvements are served. Um, we also have the pool part, um, again, the existing tarp needs to be replaced, it's approximately ten years old. Um, the filter install, it was purchased in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, um, but it needs to be installed. And just for a little bit more detail and context, I think, and Stacy can probably go into it more, but when it was actually initially purchased, uh, it was a custom and they put the pool filter in and then they built the pool house around it and really didn't think about the width of the doorway. And so that's why the, I mean, it's, it's a larger expense and that's, uh, one of the reasons why. Um, a generator, again, it was budgeted for last year, unfortunately, we did not budget enough um, for what it will cost, we're also looking at lights in Booker T Park, um, foundation park improvements, um, adding turf lighting and fixing the fountain out there, um, park mower and do electric transformer, uh, electric transformer relocation, um, we've been in contact with Encore and, um, it's about rest, it's live, and if it goes out, um, you know, we'll be liable to replace, so we're gonna, we're hoping that will last until the end of the three years, um, for these C O's. Um, we have a couple more years out of that, um, and that's, that's the overall list. And again, those are projected pricing, but the action item tonight is to improve, uh, the contract and allow the city manager to execute those documents. the contract and allow the city manager to execute those documents. And then the motion. Right.
I, I move, I move to approve the purchase and installation of new playground equipment and canopy to the Breckenridge City Park as presented.
And.
Second.
What?
Authorize the city.
And authorize the city manager to execute.
Right.
Execute documents. Second. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed?
Thank you. I know, it'd be kind of, kind of sad to see that go. It's been there forever.
How long have you worked there, Stacy?
Thirty.
Okay. So I was new when you got here.
Yeah, it, it, it had been installed. The installation was in ninety one. It opened for service in ninety two and I started in ninety three, so.
I live through on three of it.
Yeah.
I'm in part of it.
And it's hard to believe that that's thirty years old. I have people come and all the time say, you know, we played on it as a little kid. Well, that's thirty years ago. You know, and the same way with the swimming pool. Swimming pool's been there the same amount of time. I've, I've enjoyed taking care of them for thirty years. It's time for new stuff.
For that to, for that to be that that longevity for all of that.
Now the swing sets on the other side, which that's part of getting done also, uh, those have been there since the fifties. That's going to be a seventy year upgrade.
Stacy only got twelve, fifteen more years to go. He's turning over somebody. Or so you're. Item twenty, discussion, any necessary action FM thirty nine and nine utility relocation contract change order. Now turn it back to the city managers.
So this is again on the utility relocation, um, project, um. Just as a reminder, this is, um, where the city is on the hook to, uh, relocate these utilities for the intersection improvements at thirty ninety nine, FM thirty ninety nine and Walker. So they're going to be, Tech Stop will be straightening out that intersection. And in advance of that construction project, we, we are on the hook for paying for the utility relocation. So that contractor, um, that we onboarded several months ago as we, um, leave tech and, um. They've been doing a good job. Um, it's, it has been challenging. The right of way is narrow and in fact, we had um, unfortunately, a water hit today, water line hit and had issue of very water notice. Um, you know, the guys did get it repaired, uh, the water back on in three hours. So that was good. Um, the guys are working their tails off. They do an awesome job. Um, anyway, so this change order basically increases the time um, for, uh, thirty days and does reduce, remember that contract price was over what we budgeted by a long shot. We budgeted three hundred thousand and the low bid came in at five hundred and twenty one and some change. Um, and you'll see a budget amendment on later that we have to do a budget amendment for that. Um, but anyways, this will, this particular change order will reduce that, uh, by twelve thousand two hundred and eighty nine. Um, and, uh, again, it increases the time on the completion by thirty days.
I move to approve FM thirty ninety nine utility relocation contract change order as presented.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Do I have to say that? And allowing the city.
Yeah. It's just to sign the documents.
Same.
All approved. Uh, none opposed, thank you. Item twenty one, discussion and any necessary action approving planning and zoning recommendation to close the remaining portion of North Oakwood Avenue lying between blocks forty four and forty five of the Lakeview Edition of the city of Breckenridge, Texas.
So essentially what this was P and Z, um, did meet earlier and they are recommending um, that you all approve this. Apparently what had happened was, um, back in nineteen seventy eight, it was discovered that a small section of the street was not conveyed by the city as it was intended to be. Um, so instead of just referencing the street in the flat back then, um, they did a meets and bounds, which only closed thirty eight feet of the sixty foot wide streets. And so what you see here in pink is the amount that is left that, um, we, you know, we just need to close, um, that remaining portion of Northwood Oak between blocks forty four and forty five. So this is cleanup item. It was just an oversight and P and Z has recommended, um, possible.
I move to approve ordinance twenty three dash sixteen, closing the remaining portion of North Oakwood Avenue lying between blocks forty four and forty five of the Lakeview Edition of the city of Breckenridge. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Item twenty two, discuss any necessary action with proving renewal agreement with new source broadband.
So this is an existing contract, um, that essentially we are, um, allowing new source broadband to put equipment on top of water tower number one um, in exchange for, um, providing us internet service at our facilities. Um, they have, we are recommending a, a, approval of the renewal. Um, they have increased the service, um, for the locations. I think it used to be like fifty over five, what fifty download and five upload? Yeah, pretty slow. Uh, we don't lose that, um. Let me finish this and I'll go back to another, uh, piece of the conversation, but, um, much of this is redundant. So police department is actually partner, is, is using law enforcement counties. They recently were able to do that. Um, we do have, um, internet provider here, uh, for fiber at city hall. Um, but our other facilities, fire, um, wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, the top shop and animal control will use this, but they have increased the speed. So it's a hundred, um, download by twenty five upload. Um, which still isn't great, but, um, it's not bad. Um, so again, that's what this is. So we were able to increase the service. Um, and again, it's just a a slot.
I move approve the renewal agreement, new source broadband, broadband as presented. Say it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Item twenty three, discussion any necessary action for approval of B I S D pep rallies and food trucks on city streets.
So basically this is a request from I S D and I, I think you all, most people know they've been advertising and they're, um, doing, uh, the pep rallies at the courthouse. Um, the school not being in it on Friday now. Um, and what they're wanting to do is really, um, uh, make it more of an event for the downtown area. So they're, uh, proposing closing court, the, um, north of Walker to Elm and then also closing Elm um, from Court to Rose, so they can also put food trucks. Um, you guys have directed me and I'm bringing that back, but I haven't yet so that we could handle these types of requests in-house um, for the food trucks to be on city streets. Um, most cities do allow that to be as long as it meets this criteria is handled in, you know, in staff. Um, but right now I have a lot of those change, projected changes to you. Um, so it does require, uh, your approval and the dates that they're looking at are on there. It's October sixth, thirteenth and twenty seventh.
I think we need to, uh, be able to sample, make sure that they pass the criteria to, to get there. And there is certain levels of, you know, acceptance that we need.
Credit idea.
Yeah. Uh, I move to approve allowing food trucks on the city streets during B I S D pep rallies. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Item. Twenty four, discuss any necessary action regarding ordinance twenty three dash fourteen amending fiscal year two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three official budget adopted by the ordinance twenty two dash fourteen.
So this is, these are budget amendments. Typically we'll bring these to you a couple of times a year. Um, and so, uh, we've gone in and most of these are, um, not technically budget amendments, um, we're moving, we're, they're staying within the budget. We're moving within departments and between line items. Um, so it's not increasing the bottom line, although there are definitely bottom line budget amendments included on this. Um, some of those would be, um, if you look farther down there, for example, the street maintenance. So, um, you know, the rate on contract, um, by and large, was going to be paid for out of the half cent, uh, the funds that we have in our street fund, which primarily come from the half cents, a quarter cent, excuse me, sales tax. But we only, every year we only allocate, you know, maybe two hundred or two hundred and fifty. So we've got that balance in an account that we have to allocate for this year's budget. Um, and so that is a true budget amendment where we're changing that bottom line. Um, we're accounting for the receipt of the C O funds, um, and you'll see that at eight point six million. Um, and, uh, there's a couple of others in there, but, um, you can go through. I mean, it's, it's a list. And we try to clean this up. So just so you know, um, some of the back. And, um, from a staff perspective, you know, we tell people, okay, we need to, all our expenditures, we need to try to have done by September fifteenth. Um, if you had budgeted to spend money on a project or whatever, um, we need to get that over the goal line. Um, so we can get it included in this budget year. There may be a few stragglers. Um, and in that case, what happens is our auditor comes in and he highlights those when we do the audit, but he does auditor adjustments on those. Um, so this is a pretty comprehensive list here.
I move to approve ordinance twenty three dash fourteen, amending fiscal year twenty two dash twenty three official budget adopted by ordinance twenty two dash fourteen as presented. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Item twenty five, discussion any necessary action regarding approval ordinance twenty two, twenty twenty three dash eleven updating schedule fees, and this will be the second reading on it.
So you have that information again with the schedule of fees and the changes are in red. Um, it does include the water wastewater rate increases, um, that were a part of the um, water wa- wastewater rate study. Um, it does have language in there, um, providing for inspections, uh, plan review, forming inspections for, uh, Bureau Veritar's and really it's just a pass, it's just language that allows for a pass through the cost. So we're not charging anymore. We're just, um, passing that cost on to the builder and developer. For those who are.
Move, we approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash eleven updating schedule fees. Say it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, like this. All right, this time we're going to go to the executive session, present the text government code and on the checks out of fifty one, subject to date. Text Oak Meeting and act, the act city committee will recess to executive session, close meeting to discuss the following. If it's placed with our attorney over facility use agreement and city property. And that will be at, uh, six thirty five P M.
There's three executive session items.
Okay.
So you could read all of those before we go, then that when we go in under all of them for all those.
Which one did leave out?
The real.
No, real property?
Yes.
Okay. Can't just start from there?
Yeah.
All right. This, besides with her, the use agreement, city property and real property. That covered?
And then if you could read those two items. You have twenty seven and twenty eight.
All right, one point seven nine acre tract at eight twenty eight industrial loop, Breckenridge, Texas and number twenty eight to Y M C A.
Thank you. Thank you.
These are, all right, we are back in record session at seven fifteen P M. And at that moment, I'll turn it to other commissioners regarding what direction we're going.
I move that we authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the facility use agreements with the Stevens County Domain Societies and New Destination Church. Second. And then, uh, I'll go to the city manager.
All in favor?
Yes.
Sorry.
Take a vote on that, yeah. Have a vote please in a second.
We did.
We did, we got second.
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Sorry about that, uh, middle of the world here.
Yeah.
Now. Uh, I authorize the city manager to execute the documents to deed the one point seven nine acre tract at eight twenty eight industrial loop, um, to the E D C, the B E D C. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Uh.
All right.
No, that was it. That was it.
That it, all right. We're adjourned at seven seventeen P M. Thank all of you. Oops, we appreciate it.
Thank you guys. You too, receive. Put that lamp. No problem. I've been working on.